And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible deliverance to all.
Thank you. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Auger.
Present.
Mr. Eppink.
Present.
And Mr. Zurich.
Present.
So we have a smaller board tonight. We have three members out of a five-member board. We do have quorum, and in terms of procedure, any vote would have to have two votes to be affirmed one way or the other, so we'll proceed on that basis. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I'd like to take a moment and recognize Jim Sharrill. Jim Sharrill recently passed away. His funeral is tomorrow morning. Jim was a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but maybe more importantly, was just a tremendous person and a tremendous resident and business owner in an independent township for at least the last 50 years. He and his wife Kathy live here in the township, and Jim was a good personal friend, certainly a valuable member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and just a great businessman with Keefe Engineering, and has put positive fingerprints all over our township. So if you'd like to join me in just a moment of silence in memory of Jim. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, when I stopped by the funeral home tonight and talked to Kathy, she wanted to say how great, after he retired and was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals here, he totally enjoyed it.
That's great.
And he was greatly appreciated.
He was greatly appreciated, you know. Once an engineer, always an engineer, and so Jim looked at every case thoroughly and always, you know, made sure everything worked, so he will be missed for sure. I'd also like to acknowledge Brian Gailey is not on the zoning board anymore. Brian, as many of us know, also a long-term participant in our township, grew up here, has a business here, served on both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board for probably the last eight or 10 years. I learned a lot from him, and certainly the township appreciates his sacrifice and dedication as well. So thank you, Brian. I know Supervisor File is actively working to appoint new members, so we're looking forward to filling out our roster and continuing on with the zoning board. So with that, I appreciate your time. Gentlemen, we have an agenda that was published on the website. If we could have a review and any changes or acceptance of the agenda?
Hearing no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, and we have an agenda. As we begin the agenda, we'll have a moment for public comment, and that'll be a time when anybody in the audience or online would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. We'll then move into unfinished business, which actually, we don't have any unfinished business, and then right into new business. So at this point, for public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to share anything with the township that is not on tonight's agenda? Brian, I don't see anybody online. All right. Oh, we will wait. If you could come up to the lectern just so we get you on mic?
State your name and address, please.
Deborah Langley.
For everybody that's here, this is all taped, and our secretary does it remotely because we're live on TV, and be sure to sign in if you haven't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Deborah Langley, 4208 Bayshores Drive, Waterford, 48329.
Thanks, Mrs. Langley.
I'd like to address the issue of a house that is abandoned, and I looked directly at it. It is a mess, and what is on the agenda is regarding variances, but there's nothing on the agenda regarding what the next steps are with this house. Do they have, have they submitted a building plan? We have not been able to find that out. How long does it take for that building plan to get?
Mrs. Langley, so the abandoned house that you're talking about is the case tonight?
Regarding variances only, but not about other issues.
Okay.
Such as overgrown weeds, rodents, looking at this horrible-looking house. And so there's some issues a number of us would like to know about in our neighborhood. And those issues are, what is the timeframe for this house that is abandoned to be torn down? Supposedly, we've been told, it is to be demolished, and if so, how long does that take before they do it? And how long do they have to build once they've submitted a building permit?
Great. All good questions, and we'll do our best to answer those now and then throughout the night.
Thank you.
What you will see as we open up that case is that, at least for the zoning board, some architectural plans have been submitted. We'll look at those tonight. We'll go through the timing, but at this point, Brian, or Dave from the Building Department, if there's any insight in terms of either?
Yeah, we've.
Yeah, in terms of the code enforcement issues out there, those, that's why we're here, basically, you know, because our code enforcement team reached out to the owner through a letter because of the blight and weeds and so forth, and.
The dredging.
He indicated that, well, that's an Eagle issue, but, you know, he indicated that he was going to go to the zoning board, so that's why he's here. In terms of, if the ZBA grants a variance on the proposed architect, you know, the house that he's planning to build, it's good for a year, so he does have a year to submit for that building permit. You know, the building officials.
Right.
Right behind me, but, you know, if he gets, if he, you know, he has a year to submit for the building permit, the building permit's good for six months, so, you know, I don't know that he plans to start, you know, tomorrow, but that would all have to be reviewed through the Building Department.
All right.
If he gets variances tonight.
So do I have to look at this blight no matter what?
Well, at this point, no, because if he gets denied variances tonight, we're still going to continue the code enforcement action on the property.
Okay.
So when somebody submits like this, we kind of put a stay on everything that's going on because this is his due process to move the project forward.
Okay.
We'll continue the conversation as we get into this. We'll answer all the questions that we're able to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Langley. Is there anybody else that would like to address anything during public comment? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Again, item F, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into new business. We have two items. The first is the election of the officers for 2025, and then the second is a case that we'll discuss that the applicant has made a request for variances.
Over the years, I've made quite a few motions on this. I'm going to do it one at a time. I'll make a motion to elect Jim Eppick as our chairperson for another year.
I support that. Motion on chairperson for ZBA, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will then make a motion for vice president. It's interesting, we only have, or at least a discussion on that, if we want to change things up. Alan, are you interested in moving from secretary to vice president? If so, I would make that nomination.
If so, appointed, I'd accept it.
And I guess, before we vote on that, it leaves a small board in three positions. Does?
I would support that.
You would support as well?
Yes.
All right. So I will make the motion to abort Alan Auger as vice president, Ken Zurich as secretary of the ZBA. Your support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have changed seats?
Yeah.
All right. So appreciate that, gentlemen, and look forward to working together with you and with our new members soon. Second item on new business is case number 25-01, Patrick Lloyd, petitioner, requesting two variances, the first a 38-foot front yard variance and the second a half a foot side yard variance, both from section 4.06D, table 4.06 of our ordinance, in order to construct a new home on an existing non-conforming lot of record, which is located at 4190 Meyer Road in the R1A residential area.
Can we start first?
Yes, we'll go through this. What I'll do is I'm going to ask the petitioner or their representative to come forward. Again, give us your name and your address, walk us through the case. Our goal is really to understand the intent of the application specifically to the two variances at hand, the request for the front yard variance and the side yard variance. We'll ask a number of questions and discuss it among the board. At that point, we'll ask for any public comment. Anybody else in the audience at that point can come up and ask questions. Our goal really is to understand the application, understand the request for variances and any hardship that might be associated with this property. Ultimately, as you, as we discussed earlier, things like building permits, things like timing, all those other things are handled by other parts of our township, and so this board really specifically tonight is to understand the process and the request for these two variances as part of this process. With that, Patrick Lloyd, are you in the audience or representative? Applicant is not here. Why don't we wait a moment and see if Mr. Lloyd comes? If not, we table the.
You can postpone it, or you can act on it. He was notified.
I think so.
What are the pros and cons of having a short discussion without the petitioner making his case first?
Certainly, since you have a quorum, you can certainly act on the case even without him here, whether you make a motion or not. You can postpone it, give him the benefit of the doubt. You could do that also. It's certainly your call, what you want to do, but, you know, he's been notified multiple ways, one being the property owner, and two being the fact that when the packet came to you, he was notified via email electronically.
And he also filled out an application and requested this and paid a fee.
He did, and I've also communicated with him, you know, several times over, you know, email, so he, you know, he was answering that email.
And it doesn't sound like, one way or the other, he either said, yep, I'm looking forward to it, or heck, I can't be there that night.
I think, I think in this particular case, I spent quite a bit of time out there on this lot, everybody on that street, Meyer Street is a very popular street to come before this board. I think with the practical difficulties and the hardship that this lot presents, it's an existing lot of record, we have a lot of these in the township and a lot of them on Meyer Street. Myself, I would want to postpone it, I think, till the next regularly scheduled meeting. If he doesn't show up then, we'll make some action at that point.
Yeah, if you postpone it, that's open-ended, so I'll communicate with him tomorrow and figure out what happened.
Can't we set a definite time, like the next?
If you table it, yeah, I mean, I can still get the notice out tomorrow and have him on the agenda. If you postpone it, he may have to wait till March.
Okay.
You know, because I, and the neighbors will be re-notified, so don't worry. We'll re-notify you.
We're worried.
Yeah, you'll get another phone card.
Yeah, we're worried, mosquito.
Ken, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I agree about tabling it until next month, but given the.
Next month is February.
Given that there are homeowners here, I think we should be asking some more questions.
Oh, he just popped on.
Waiting in the lobby?
Now he's up. All right.
He's upstairs? No, he's on. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I'm late. I have trouble logging in here.
Good. My name is Jim Eppink. You're on the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have quorum tonight, and we were just reading your case into the meeting. You're asking for two variances, the first a 38-foot front yard setback variance and a second, a half a foot side yard setback, I'm sorry, yes, side yard setback, both from the same section, 4.06D. We've gone through the packet, we've been to your location, we do have a few neighbors in the room as well, so if you could walk us through your application, we're interested specifically in the variances, the hardships related to the property and so forth, and help us understand what your goals are.
Sure, the, we'll start off the hardships. This is a triangular-shaped lot, so in order to erect anything on this property, a variance would be required, given the setbacks that are, you know, described per the subdivision rules per se, and other things that are applicable to the subdivision. The, the house layout is unique, and that, due to the uniqueness of the way the house is laid out, is another reason why we went for a variance for this particular design. There are many improvements that we'd like to make to the property to put this house in the property, and I'm happy to answer any questions that people in attendance would like to ask.
So we do note to your point that it is an existing non, or a lot of non-conforming lot of record. It's an unusual shape. There's an existing house on it right now that does not conform, therefore making it a non-conforming lot of record, is not conform to the current setbacks. And if I read the surveys correctly, it looks as though the current house is about, the side yard is about three foot from the, I guess, kind of the northeast side lot, and you're proposing to build the new house nine and a half feet. So you're actually moving or proposing to move the new house further away from the side yard. It'll still be a half-foot variance request, but considerably more than the three foot that it is now. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And then the front yard, which goes out to Meyer, the existing house or garage, it's a detached garage now, is about 12 and a half, almost 13 foot off the line, and you're requesting it to be just two foot from the right-of-way. So that corner of the house would actually come a little closer, quite a bit closer to the, to the right-of-way line than it currently is. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what can you tell us about your timeline? We've had some questions just in our public comment section. I'm sure we'll hear more tonight. What do you, what's your timeline for your project?
Upon approval, we would like to start the springtime.
Of '25?
Correct.
And how long do you think it would take to build a house like this?
Optimistically, eight months. Realistically, close to a year.
Okay. And I've got one last question before we, I asked other board members here. Looking at the plans for the house above the garage, I note that it says studio apartment. What can you tell us about the studio apartment?
It's just an in-law's quarters. My, our parents are getting old, so I wanted to make sure that they have a spot to go to if needed, so that's the purpose of that.
Is it something that you would rent, or either long-term or short-term?
Not necessarily, no, it's not really in the, in the plans. It's marked for family. We have a lot of family that is from out of state that does come into town, and just, we had people over that wanted to stay tonight that have a spot to stay as well.
So I think it's important to note on the record and have you acknowledge that, that this is a single-family zoning R1A district, and within that district, we do not allow duplexes, and so if that was any type of rental situation, either short-term or long-term, that house would be considered a duplex, which would not be permitted. So to have, you know, a teenager or an in-law stay there, I suppose, that, that, you know, I'll defer to the Building Department, but would keep it as a single-family home. But to be clear, the township would not permit any type of rental situation in this, in this zoning district.
Understood.
Okay. Ken, any thoughts, questions?
I guess my first thought is, I'm happy to hear that you're pulling a little bit farther away from the lot line, but I'm a little bit concerned about the front yard Is, I guess the question to the Building Department, did we look at these plans already? Or that's not the sequence of events, right? He needs to get the variance, and then he comes to. Looking at the pictures and some of the information, what's the side, is that steel walls on the side?
Looks like a container, set of containers.
Yeah, they're, basically, this home is built out of shipping containers.
And we have no direction, no, nothing that prevents that or gives guidelines for that?
We really don't have any guidance in the residential code 2015. The state is about to adopt the 41 code, and we don't know exactly when. I don't know if there's any guidance in the code for container construction, but, you know, we'd have to figure that out when the plans are submitted. I'd have to probably outsource the plan review and see what it would entail. It still would have to comply with the Michigan Residential Code 2015 as it's written, because that's what we abide by in the entire state, not just in the township.
But just for the record, that's Dave Moran of our Building Department responding. Thank you, Dave.
I guess I have no questions right now, but I may have a few in a little bit.
Alan?
My main concern is making sure that it blends in with the community out there. It is, it is an island all to itself, and although the architecture does vary from structure to structure, took a lot of pictures from out there when I was out there yesterday. Right now, I guess I, I'd like to hear from people in the audience.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd, we're going to, we're going to, you're going to obviously stay in the meeting here, but we're going to shift and we're going to open up for public comment in this case, so if there's anything, Mrs. Langley had presented some thoughts in terms of maintenance. We can revisit that with, during this case, but if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board, now would be the time, and again, you come to the lectern, give us your name, give us your address, and all questions and comments should come through the board as opposed to discussions with neighbors.
Mr. Lloyd, thank you for attending.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm glad to hear about your plans. The house looks beautiful.
Please state your name and address again.
Deborah Langley, 4208.
Thank you.
Bayshores. Deborah Langley, four-two-zero-eight, Bay Shores Drive.
And Mrs. Langley, if you could ask any questions to the board as opposed, it just keeps it a little easier to run the meeting if we, uh...
Absolutely.
Kind of direct the questions.
Okay. Um, one of my questions is, what is the timeframe, um, Mr. Lloyd, of demolishing the home?
Why don't we go through all the questions and then I'll, we'll respond back.
And also, um, the sea wall, how large is that, how long is that sea wall going to be, and will it affect my property in any way, especially after they did all the dredging? So, that's all, I'm con- I'm concerned about that. Um, and other than that, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, other than I think it looks beautiful, your home.
You, you've seen the pictures and you think they look beautiful. Mrs. Langley, if, if I may, um, and, and they're online, so you certainly can see them online.
Yes.
Can you help us, do you live to the, if I'm looking at the, the applicant's house, do you live to the right or to the left or across the street?
I live right across the little creek.
Okay.
And part of the lake from him.
Kind of across the channel.
And a island, uh, yeah, an island that is protected by the DNR, I guess, right?
Yep, cool. Thank you.
Your hu- your house is by the equipment there? They're working on the sewer or something?
No, no, no.
It's across, well, Bay Shores is across from there. It's like a little small hole.
There's six homes on a little circle we're in.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the newer construction.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, please.
My name's Lori Wright. Hi, thank you for talking with us this evening. We've been very concerned.
Your address too, please.
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm four-two-one-four Bay Shores.
Also.
I work for, directly next door to Langley's, Wright home, um, and we have been concerned with them about all these exact same things, the sea wall, the water, the way it's going to affect the, um, the natural community there. If you've been out there, Mr. Algar, you, you know, out into the Bay area, it's a very kind of a nature preserve area. We're just concerned how all of, what's gonna happen with the sea wall.
Okay.
And the water area, as well as the land and the development of the land. The home looks beautiful. Um, we're just concerned about the timing too. You know, we don't want to be five years out.
Timing makes sense. And do you have any, uh, questions, comments, thoughts on the two variances that are being requested from this board?
Um, just a lot of it is about, um, the safety of the area. My concern is, you know, safety for the house. There's even a house next to it.
For all the homes.
Just some of the safety is my concern, as my daughter's in Los Angeles evacuating right now from the fires.
Makes sense.
So, I'm very occupied with that tonight, but this is important enough that we're still here. So, the, the safety of the area.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the, the board? Right. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, I, I wanna just get your thoughts on some of these questions. So, the first was, uh, the timeframe. There you are. I see you're off in the corner. Uh, timeframe, uh, for the demo, you had given us the idea of, of beginning in the spring and ideally taking eight to twelve months. Um, assuming you're able to move forward, uh, with the township, do you have, again, a better sense of timing of when the permits would be pulled, and, uh, what your goals are there?
Yeah, I've always learned that don't put the cart in front of the horse, and this is a perfect example, um, because, uh, I need everyone to sign off before I tear down a building. Um, everyone's gotta be on board. I have to have permits in hand, um, for this project. So, uh, that's a question I'd like to ask you guys. How quickly are you, you turn around on permitting and, um, how quickly is the plan review process? Because that's something I don't know.
Okay. We'll get you some of those answers tonight. Have you begun the, the, uh, process in terms of the shore and the sea wall? That, I'm assuming is an Eagle jurisdiction, uh, project. Have you begun to work with Eagle? Because that, that would point to some of the timeline as well.
Yeah, the, the Eagle work isn't, isn't gonna affect the construction, uh, process, um, or the demolition of the building. Uh, this, what, what Eagle, Eagle moves really slow. It took me nine months to get a dredging permit, um, over there, and that, I wasn't able to do what we really intended in doing, because the culvert is still filled with trash. Um, I wanted to clean that out. I was gonna pay out of pocket to clean it out. I asked the, the state to get involved. I called the, uh, township to get involved, and everyone puts their hands up. So, um, I, it's still, it's still filled with, with a bunch of garbage right now. Uh, it does not permit water flow very good, uh, but it's something that I would like to address before the sea wall goes in, to one of the our neighbors' points. It needs to be well maintained. Um, so this is, uh, something that, um, we'd like to address, uh, before the sea wall construction is taken care of.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry?
Mr. Lloyd, do you have an Eagle permit for, for doing the sea wall, or the...
We do not have an Eagle permit yet. No, we do not. We have, uh, just a dredging permit.
Okay.
All right. With that, a close public comment. We'll bring it back to the, uh, zoning board. Any other additional thoughts or...
No, it's a very difficult lot. Um, it's hard to put a house of similar quality to what is already on Meyer Street, on on that particular island. Um, most of them all require something from the Sony Board of Appeals on their ordinances, 'cause just nothing out there fits. Um... Brian, have we had any comment on the location of the home sitting on this triangular lot from any of the homeowners?
I, I don't think so. I know I spoke with a couple of neigh- a couple of the neighbors.
Yeah.
And I, I didn't, a lot of it, you know, we've had a lot of calls in the code enforcement department about, you know, the, the blight and so forth. So, I know the guys have been out there, uh, dealing with that. But in terms of the home location, um, there's still quite a bit of distance between the property line and the actual road edge, um, based on the aerial there.
Yes.
Um, but I haven't heard any concern, you know, from, from the neighbors who are immediately affected about the location.
Related to the actual variance request. I'll come back to you just a minute, please.
Um, and this fits okay with our setback off the water line too?
Yes.
Um, if that's the case.
You don't think it's a little bit too close to the roadway? I mean, it looks like some adjustment could be made, and it could be pushed back a little bit, the one corner.
The garage.
Yeah.
He just has to maintain fifty feet to the water line.
I think what Mr. Zirk is suggesting is, uh, lessen the, the two-foot request.
Yes.
From the front road.
Be from this corner right here?
Correct.
Yes. It just seems like that would be an easy alteration to the plans.
What is the proposed, I guess it to the, uh, Mr. Lloyd, the, uh, what's the proposal for the part between the square part of the house and probably where the garage is gonna be? Um, it's an eight, sixteen or eight foot, eighteen foot, uh, area there, like a breezeway or something.
If you look at the draw, if, if you look at the elevation plan, um, I do believe that we'll refer to that, and I just wanna make sure I'm commenting correctly. Um, if you're looking at it from Meyer's Road, looking at the property to the right of the garage, is, are you, is that where you're, you're, um, asking where the entrance of the home is?
Yes.
Okay, if you, if you could go back to the, uh, the elevation plan that shows that shot. So, okay, this is it right here. Um, we do plan on having some parking in that area to the right of the garage.
Hey, if, if I may, I think the, the, the limiting factor in that is in between the two sections of the house, the main house and that, uh, there's a proposed pool, and the dimension of the pool, I think, is set by a container and then the, the area around it. And so, let's say we, we suggested, hey, let's, let's bring, you know, make this area more narrow than that, that pool wouldn't fit.
Yeah.
Am I, am I saying that correctly, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, you know, the pool is intricate to this house, so I, um, I don't wanna have to lose the pool over two feet. I mean, if you go through the subdivision, there's homes that are, all the new homes on the, in the sub are not conforming as it is.
Mr. Zirk?
Well, maybe I'm not understanding here. Um, I wish I could zoom down a little bit. Our zoom.
You can.
There it goes, okay. So, where is the road on this?
Well, it's, it's kind of on an angle, so it's, this corner is that two foot.
So, what's, so what's the big deal about pulling this back?
Well, pulling the garage and the cabana back.
And that gets it away from, it's on an angle, right? I mean, I don't know the angle, but...
Yeah, my, my interpretation was to narrow this part, but you're suggesting shifting that.
To ship it, uh, where's true north, um...
Uh, part of the, part of the orientation of this house as well is when you walk in, you can get a direct view across the lake.
Walking in.
Well, I would note that from the right of way line to the edge of pavement, of course, it changes, but it's generally twelve to fourteen foot. So, the, that corner of the garage as proposed would, would roughly be fourteen to sixteen foot from the road.
Right, but there's, to me, there's, there's nothing new in that area that is that close.
Mm-hmm.
So, why would we make it, um, an exception to what's been going on? I, I agree, it's a lot of non-conformity, but, uh, why...
How far do you push it?
Why do we wanna make it so challenging, uh, for an exception?
Can I ask what the issue is with, with this, with the, the, the reason that there's two foot being that close? When I drive around this entire sub, that there's homes that are too close to a property line, or, um, you know, uh, there's a house that was just built right down the street from us a couple of years ago. Took...
They, they took it to two feet? I don't know. I don't remember seeing that.
I, I don't, I don't believe it's two feet, but there's, you know, it's, um, it, it takes up pretty much all, the entire lot. Um, there's another one that just went up in the back of the sub, which is beautiful as well, um, that, um, I know they had to go in front of the board as well at their approval. So, if I can't go two feet, how do you suggest that revise these entire, uh, these plans?
Miss, Mr., uh, Mr. Lloyd, our, our job as a board is to, um, understand and defend the, the township zoning ordinance with the acknowledgement that, especially in this area, the township, there's many, many lots of non-conforming. So, we're, 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 you know, part of our process is to discuss it. Um, we're not always able to solve the problem, and, um, uh, our goal historically is to look at variances, even if a variance may be considered, uh, could a, could a, less of a variance, uh, be possible. So, our board has a history of saying, boy, if, instead of two foot, maybe four foot would be better. And so, that's, that's what we're going through right now, is trying to understand that. We know you clearly have a good architect, and architects are able to solve a lot of problems. So, we're going through that process of, of trying to understand the, the pros and cons and the impact to the neighborhood. Mr. Zirk, go, I would, I would, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't see any conflict with the impact of the neighborhood as the, um, public just spoke.
Okay. Um, Mr. Zirk, I would note that one way to lessen the impact, um, to the street perhaps would be to shift the entire house slightly to the northeast, but if we did that, um, it would, you know, theoretically drive it closer to the neighbor now. Now, the existing home currently is only three foot, and this, we talked about, is nearly ten foot from the property line as proposed. Um, that's a, potentially a solution. The other one is changing the architecture of the house.
How close is the pool to the, to the line of, um, uh, the back property line, I guess? Is that considered a structure, so you have to follow the, the rules there?
Pools have to be ten feet from the rear property line, or greater.
Even when there's water?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the structure, see, this is a little different, because it appears that there is area to move it towards the, based on the survey here, move it towards the water, but then you've got property line you're dealing with that doesn't even get to the water, the actual water's edge. So, you have to maintain a, a rear yard setback at that point of fifty feet.
For the house?
Yes.
From the property line, which doesn't go all the way to the water.
Correct.
I can't, uh, what, what's the di- current dimension from the house? Would be the garage or the house?
The house. I, I haven't measured the actual house to the back property line, or the water's edge.
It would be from this point to this point.
Right. If that's, just scaling it, if it's, and what line would we be able to go to?
Now, there is a way to handle triangular lots in the zoning ordinance, in the definitions, where you take, uh, it's a little hard to explain without drawing it, but basically you take a, the distance of the rear yard setback, which is fifty feet. You draw a line at the back corner, at the very top of the, of the, the actual, and that becomes your rear, and then you treat each side as a side, 'cause it's opposite the front. So, you could interpret it that way. The zoning ordinance has that in the definition, if you wanna allow that. So, he theoretically could probably shift it towards the water if you interpret the, the lot in that configuration.
Strike a cord length across the back.
Yeah, it's, and actually, it's not the rear yard, it's the, it's the, the side yard, so ten feet. So, it's a, it's a very small, you're creating a very small triangle at the very top corner, and it, and that would be the, the rear property line at that point.
Technically, right now, there is no rear property line. There's two sides.
Correct.
Two sides in the front.
Yep.
So, you can square it off parallel with the road.
But I think that creates other problems, because then he wouldn't, he wouldn't meet, uh, the rear yard setback.
Brian, do you know offhand, and I can't read it from the plans here, is the house as proposed, is close to that, let's call it the rear property line, the water property line, as it can be, if, if the house was to shift two feet in that direction? Um, are we still within acceptable ordinance provided?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have my scale with me, um, 'cause I needed a scaled plan to even create the, the variances on this project, but...
You're talking about taking the house like this and moving it?
No, no, just taking it and moving it this way.
Just moving it back.
He's, he's pretty close to being right at the fifty-foot marker. Right now, if you treat that as a rear. Right now, if you treat that as a rear.
No. The dotted, that's the pool, right?
Correct.
Now, how does the pool fall into that fifty-foot?
It's, regardless, it's gotta be, a pool regulations are very simple. It's, has to be behind the home, it has to be, or on the side, has to be ten foot from the side yard or ten foot from the rear.
So...
So the pools...
But what about the water pool, is this water's edge?
Well, in this case, the property line is here and the water's edge is up here, so there's association.
He's not even connected, I mean...
So he's got still a good distance to the water.
Yeah, so I think he's, the pool could go back. I just think he's gonna have a hard time stretching it even further towards that line.
So...
And actually meeting it.
Right now, the current house is a twenty-eight-foot setback variance, I, I believe, roughly twenty-eight, twenty-eight and a half or twenty-seven and a half or something.
Thirty-eight.
I'm sorry?
Thirty-eight.
The current house?
The current house is a thirty-eight-foot front yard setback, so it's two feet from the property, the front property line.
No, that's the proposed, the current white house.
Oh, the current white house, yeah, that's, um...
Twelve foot nine, twelve point nine.
Twelve point, and you got it, Alan?
Yeah, it's on the plan.
Twelve point nine, yeah.
So to, to me, it's very possible to, to make an alteration, to either move the garage a little bit closer to the lake or to maybe push the whole, the whole unit, the whole house back a little bit more and get closer to the current, um, twenty-eight-foot variance. Instead of what you're asking for, the thirty-eight-foot variance.
Uh, part of the, one of the reasons this plan is where it is is based up on our soil, soil boarding report. We've got good soil where this is located. The farther we go back, we don't.
Well, I, I understand the concern. My, my, my solution in my mind was to say, hey, let's, let's move the back part of that cabana area, which I define as the back of the house, furthest back point of the house, and take that to the point where it's fifty-foot, which might make it somewhere, you know, four to six foot off the right-of-way, I'm not sure. But I'm leery to just make dimensional decisions arbitrarily, especially not knowing the soils or really the impact of the lake and all those other things. So I'm not sure how to resolve this kind of in committee like this.
So let me get this, understand this. What, what, the, the issue is the two foot off of the property line, am I correct?
That's the issue that we're talking about.
That's the concern I have.
Right now, the house is three foot off the property line. Why don't we just move the house three foot off the property line and, and leave it as is? But we bumped it off the property line because we were giving, giving space. If you've driven down this road, there's a, there are a lot of green space from the corner of this two foot to the, to the, uh, edge of the road. There's probably fifteen, fifteen, so twenty feet.
So what he's saying is, what I had said earlier, is you could shift the whole building over, which would take that garage apart, but it's gonna encroach more onto the neighbor as the current house does.
Right, the, the, right now, the house isn't three foot off, oh, three, it's not three foot off the roadway.
No, it's, but the, the suggestion is, is that you take the proposed house and shift it further, let's call this east, further east, more in line with the three foot now, which would bring it further away from the road. So your road setback would increase, but the side yard, as it's currently advertised, at just a half a foot variance request, would, would encroach further into that, would need a new variance request.
You don't wanna do that.
My, my, and I'll just speak from my impression of being on the street, trying to understand the, the geometry of the architecture. If, if the entire house, let's say that the house rotated and was, the front of the house was parallel with Myers Street, Myers Road, I think it could be imposing, right? I mean, it's a huge house or a big house right up against the road. The fact that it's canted, and really, we're talking about just one corner of the garage and the primary house, because of the shape of the lot and because of the angle it's on, becomes further and further away from and actually creates a decent-sized front lawn for that neighborhood, probably a bigger front lawn than most of those neighbors. My impression is structurally, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be less of an impact on the road than the diagram might suggest at that two foot, that it's the only part of that house that's two foot. If you went to the far east side there, you know, that, that's thirty-five or forty foot from the road. Quite a bit further back than the current house is now.
If you look at the existing dwelling just above there, four one seven four, what do you think the corner house is off the property line? Do you think it's encroaching on it?
Five point four feet.
Yeah, it's five point four feet.
Okay.
You could move it all the way from the, uh, the street and put the pool, um, over where it says Lot Two, set the pool in that area and shorten it all up, move it off the property line.
The whole part of the pool, bringing pool into the home, it's designed. You look at the, the elevation plan from the rear and from the front, the whole pool, the, the whole idea of the pool is to bring the pool into the home. Uh, moving a pool is not an option here.
Well, gentlemen, um, we've, we've had a lot of discussions, we've got an application. I'm certainly happy to continue to talk about it, but I don't know if we wanna, uh, we've got options to approve, to deny, to table with questions for additional information. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I see the advantages of moving it, but I, I'm, I'm hesitant to move it too much in my own mind without more data, uh, because I don't wanna, uh, you know, suggest to build a, I don't know enough about the soils and where that termination line is or nor do I know the exact distance to the rear property line.
Uh, Mr. Lloyd, uh, when do you propose to, uh, the earliest that you can do the demo on this lot?
So would you approve this and approve my plans?
So you have nothing in the works right now about demoing it, uh, terminating the utilities and, uh, items like that that are required before you can be issued a building permit?
Uh, I, I'm afraid to demo this, because if I demo it, then I have a non-conforming lot that's not buildable until it's approved. I want something approved before I demo the, uh, house.
I understand.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I, I don't think, it doesn't become less conforming or more conforming if, if, uh, you know, right now, it's blighted, um, with a number of, of, uh, enforcement issues. If, i- is the applicant been cooperative with the enforcement issues, addressed them?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Good, appreciate that.
If you demolish the house, it does not make it non-buildable.
Correct.
So...
Uh, then that, I would need something in writing that says, said that to protect our, my interests.
Well, every, every lot in the township is buildable with certain limitations, whether it's septic or, or other. And you still have to go through open county on the septic system here or sewer or whatever.
There's no septic here.
If you're gonna have sewer, then, yeah, then...
It's all sewer.
Then I don't know that you have anything to worry about.
There's no risk.
There's no risk.
There's no risk.
Well, I, I guess my thought is, I would, the, one idea would be to, uh, table this for, um, a short time and ask the, uh, Mr. Lloyd and his architect to go back and try and ask for like a twenty-eight-foot setback request on the front that is very close to the existing home setback variance.
What are we considering the front? Which, which side?
Closest corner.
Meyer Road, the closest corner, so the concern is that front corner of the garage, which is, uh, resulting in the two-foot request.
So you want a twenty-eight-foot setback there instead of two foot?
Instead of thirty-eight foot.
So this house I can't build there, if you're saying that?
Do I, am I getting my numbers? Give me, give me a second.
But the, right now, I'm requesting a two-foot setback instead of a twenty-eight. You're requesting that I draw it a twenty-eight foot. Twenty-eight foot is taking out the whole left side of the house.
If you're using your terms, a two foot, I would like you to go to a twelve-foot request.
So...
I can't do that. I won't do that.
Where the numbers are, where the numbers are coming from is the existing house is currently twelve foot nine inches, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve foot, twelve point nine foot from the Meyer Road right-of-way. Mr. Zurich is suggesting that the new house should conform to that minimum front yard setback of twelve foot nine, twelve point nine feet. That same distance.
Let, let's go up the road then. Let's look at the master plan, look at the house that was just built right up the street then.
Sir...
And then, uh, go around the neighborhood.
I mean, if you're, if you, if you'd like to bring in that type of information, uh, you know, in a, in a future meeting, you're certainly welcome to do so.
So you're requesting the, you're requesting that I take out my garage, is what you're saying?
My, my thought is, I'm requesting you to find a way to go to twelve feet off the front property line.
Which is where I have a twelve, which is where I'm requesting a two foot, right?
Where you're requesting two foot, yes.
So...
Okay, so you're, so the, the, then I, I probably won't pursue this house then. I'm not gonna waste any more time, if this is the, this is the way you guys wanna do this. Uh, the public is, uh, the public is okay with this design. It meets the intent of the neighborhood. Um, it will have harmonizing effects as well. And this house that's there has been rotting for years, and I wanna do something with this lot. And what you do, what you've done is just destroyed my, uh, my plan here.
Mr. Lloyd...
This is not even accom- accomplishable with what you've just mentioned.
Okay, I appreciate your, 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 uh, passion and your statements. We're still, uh, discussing, so let's just all remain cool. I appreciate it. So, um, let's assume, Ken, that the proposed front corner of the main house is twelve point nine foot. I don't know if it is or not, but what you're suggesting then is that we took a parallel line and kept it there so that the, you know, if this is in fact about twelve nine where the existing house is, that it would cut, cut straight across there, which if, if you've been out there again, I think, again, if that's twelve foot nine, let's assume it is for the sake of this, when you're out there, there is, there's, there's quite a bit of green space and that house really doesn't feel like, to me, like it encroaches. It doesn't feel like it's up close. Um, and so I'm just wondering, you know, by doing that, it would alter the shape of this significantly. And, and does it affect that? I will say that, that over the last half dozen years or so, a, a number of homes on Meyer as well as Myers as well as some of the adjacent streets have had, um, because they're all non-conforming, as we've mentioned, have built some unique architecture and, and frankly, big homes there, and, and they all seem to add a lot of character. It doesn't seem as though architecture or placement is the concern as much as timing, blight and the eagle issues. It is tough with this orientation, but you're right, but it would cut basically that. And by taking that, then we'd be too close to the lake.
Yeah, I guess it's hard to see without the road there, but, um, in the, uh, land view there, I mean, I don't know what the corner of the breezeway is. Just seems like a thirty-eight foot variance. I don't know, I, I haven't come across that yet on this board. I haven't been here that long, but...
Been here a long time. That's a fair point.
I'm looking at Leo's lot, at four one oh four, Leo built that last year, or the year before. His garage is built right on the property line. Four one oh four. I watched him build that, too.
We can move forward with an approval, uh, if you guys want to.
Well, we need... Any other thoughts, Ken, or Alan?
I, I'm not sho- sold on the architecture being shipping containers, uh, for this neighborhood. Uh, he's asking us for a pretty good-sized variance and, uh... I don't see anything for the neighborhood there, other than the improvement to build a structure that would be a, a tremendous improvement for the neighborhood and remove the blight.
You're saying that the home would? You know, shipping container homes are interesting. They always seem, in my experience of just watching, there's a few in Royal Oak and other places. I think everyone's a little nervous about them, but, but oftentimes, I don't know, can't say in this, in this case or every time, but oftentimes, they end up being pretty unique and pretty impressive and, and generally add to neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about that. Our board doesn't really regulate architecture, although you're absolutely right that we'd often ask about it and ask for assurances in terms of materials and architecture. So I'm not saying it's inappropriate. So I mean, why don't we do this? Um, unless someone has a motion, I will make a motion to allow the board to make a decision.
I agree.
So in that case, I will, uh, make a motion in the affirmative to, uh, grant variances as requested, a total of two variances. There's a three-foot front yard, uh, variance and a point, uh, one foot or a, a, a half a foot variance from the side yard, uh, with the understanding that this is a non-conforming lot of record, that it's a highly unusual-shaped triangular lot, that, um, the setback on the side is actually lessening the current, uh, non-conforming situation by about, uh, uh, six feet. So it's bringing it further from the neighbor. Um, that the applicant has indicated that at no time will the studio apartment, um, be rented, short-term or long-term, and, uh, we're, that we are not approving or, uh, creating a duplex unit within the single-family neighborhood. Um, and that obviously, that the applicant would have to have, um, as-built surveys completed and conform with all requirements of the building department.
And survey of the foundation before...
A survey of the foundation before, uh, to, to valid, uh, to verify, uh, its location prior to construction.
Yes, thank you.
That is my motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any, uh, questions or clarification on the motion? All right, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppich?
Yes.
Mr. Zurich?
No.
Mr. Lloyd, uh, I think you were not at our, our meeting. We only have a three-person board tonight. Uh, we have quorum and two out of three, uh, is a positive vote, so your variances, uh, were, um, granted tonight or, or agreed to. Uh, we're gonna ask you to work very, very closely with the building department...
Uh, we're gonna ask you to work very, very closely with the building department and with the neighbors. You've heard here that there's a number of concerns with the existing condition of the house, the existing condition of the property and its upkeep. We, you know, the township will expect you to continue to conform with all, um, uh, compliance issues and upkeep of the house.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, uh, to my neighbors and, um, I look forward to getting you guys a full set of working, uh, plans and, uh, for, for approvals so we can clean up this lot and, um, get moving on to construction. So thank you very much for listening and, um, uh, everyone who was attended as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, with that, we are closing the new business. Uh, next item, item H is approval of minutes. We've got the December 4th, 2024 minutes in the packet. Do you guys have a chance to review those? I was not at that meeting, but I did review the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
The December 4th meetings are approved. Uh, item I is discussion with an open meeting. Um, do we have any discussion of the board?
No.
No? Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year. Good new start to the year. Uh, look forward to it and, uh, again, we'll keep Jim in mind with everybody. Uh, with that, our last item is an adjournment, a motion that we adjourn at, uh, can't really see that, 708?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
They are adjourned. Thank you.